Followed by the regular section of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee, County Pro Chiefs and State of Arizona to be held on Tuesday, February 5th, 2018, at 7:30, I'm sorry, 7:00 PM in Pro Chiefs County. Fourth Supervisor's Hearing Room, 1415 Valley Lane Building G, Bisbee, Arizona. This is the Police Department.
Councilmember Gabe Lindstrom.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacaminho.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Robert Smith, City Manager Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Carrie Bagley, Finance Director, Daniel Duchan, Personnel Director, Dwayne Wallace, Operations Manager, Albert E. Chavez, Police Chief, George Castillo, Fire Chief, Britt Hansen, City Attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. For our invitation, I'd like to take a moment of silence. Since we last met, many people have lost those close to them. Unfortunately, a couple of those are very close to some of us. So I would like to acknowledge the passing of Chief Chavez's father, George Chavez, and the passing of Mike Lefty Lasevich, one of our past mayors, a two-term mayor. So we take a moment of silence in remembering them and those that also passed. Thank you. Would you please stand and join me in the platting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. We have a nice crowd. Under Mayor's proclamation, the agenda did this proclamation. However, the move that we're in the middle of moving and getting computers up, which have happened, and everything's good, that's not happening tonight, so that'll be next time. But I would like to, first of all, acknowledge Chief George Castillo, our Fire Chief. Chief, would you come up? You have a few things to say. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. The reason I came up here today, first, we've had some changes within our department. We actually did some recent hiring. We had a position that came available to us last budget for Rover. We finally got all squared away, got that person hired. In that time, we also lost two employees, one to a different agency, and one got injured and decided he just wanted to go to school, so he's had some testing. I don't see all the new employees here yet, so I might just give a little segment and go on to the next thing real quick if possible. But I also have some promotions within our department. We've had two captain slots within our department that were just filled with temporary positions as well as intended positions. The former chief, Bernard Lightwood, he was promoted, his captain slot was never filled. And then when I got promoted, my captain slot wasn't filled. So we finally got the testing done, ordered all-new testing, all-new questions. There was a series of skills they had to do, inbox questions, they had to do interviews. All this was done with outside agencies, it wasn't done in-house, to make it fair. We had representatives, officers from Fire Department, as well as White Storm Fire Department during the testing. So with that, we ended up selecting Captain Jim Richardson. He's been on the department for 17 years, and was a lieutenant when I was captain. Former Lieutenant Mark Perez, who is now Captain Perez, he's got 15 years in the department. We also did some lieutenant testing. So the one that got picked for that was Kevin Pacheco. He's now a lieutenant, he's got seven years within the department. Mr. Clarence Hickman, he is now a lieutenant within the department as well, eight years. And we have Biesse Njor, which he's on duty right now, I believe they're on a call. So he's here right now, but if I could, I'd like to bring them up with their families and have their families pin their badges on, if you guys don't mind.
We'd appreciate that. Thanks, Chief.
You all can come up here, please, and... I will start with our senior guy here, which is Captain Jim Richardson. He's gonna have his wife wear and pin his badge on for him. Good evening, pinned by his daughter. This is a newly appointed... A little late, but Raul came in here. I'm sorry, Lieutenant Raul, A-Shift. Next, we'll get on to lieutenants. We'll start with a new lieutenant, C-Shift, Clarence Hickman. His wife pinned his badge on, Alma. Pinned by Lieutenant Kevin Pacheco. Next, we have Lieutenant Biesse Njor. He's gonna be pinned by Captain Davy tonight. Captain Davy's in the Raul's kind of event as well in the department, so he... Now we're here, our new employee showed up, a little late. But we had seven people that came and tested with us, and now on Saturday, we picked three. It was a pretty difficult written test, followed by a physical agility test. That is also very difficult, that took a full turnout here, and it's timed, it's an obstacle course, and then all of ours, we're just sitting all over the officers. Out of those, we picked three. I'd like to introduce them now. They come up here, we have Jennifer Fonseca. This is Tasia. I always have a hard time with her last name, but we call her TK. As you can see, we did pick up two female firefighters. I think last time, well, Bisbee's known to have the first female firefighter in the state of Arizona. I believe in the late 90s, we hired two women as well, they both left. We welcome them, they're gonna help us out a lot, especially with certain patients that feel more comfortable with a woman in the back of an ambulance. They're vital tools to our department, and we look forward to having them there completing their training right now. And see how those, with so far, they go right into us. An asshole.
So nice to meet you. Stay safe out there. Thanks, Chief, and thank you, ma'am, and the Fire Department. And most of all, thank you to the families that you supported. And moving on to Chief Albert E. Chavez, the Police Department. Oh, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers of the public. Today, we're gonna recognize a few of our employees over to the Police Department. We have a couple new hires as well. Last week, or the last meeting, I introduced our new ACO, Ms. D. Today, I'd like to introduce you to one of our new dispatchers, our power new dispatcher, Emily Woolberry, Woolberry, did I say that wrong?
Wilby.
Wilby, sorry, excuse me.
Come on, say it.
Yes. So Emily's just started with us in dispatch, she's in training now. And again, we welcome her to the Police Department and to the City of Bisbee. At this time, I'd also like to invite Sergeant Bill Silva up to the front. We too, at the Police Department, have recently had a promotion. Once was Officer Bill Silva, is now Sergeant Bill Silva of the Bisbee Police Department. And we just want to bring up the knowledge, his promotion as one of our new supervisors to the Police Department. And again, he's close to 20 years with the city now. Close to, yeah, close to 20 years with the city of Bisbee. Spent a long time in his career as a patrolman, and I think even longer times as a detective working narcotics. And we're happy for him to promote, and we're even happier to have him back with us tonight, Bisbee Police Department. Congratulations. And I'd also like to call up to the front, if I could have Caris Morel, Brian Swan, and Christopher Long. Joey. Yeah, you heard that, sorry. Everybody knows him as Joey, guys. Yes, yes. Make sure I have everybody on. So we want to acknowledge the longevity for the Police Department. And Joey, Deputy Chief Long, has just completed five years for the city. Seems kind of strange, five years, but in reality, it's five years for the second time. He did some time here, went off to work for the state, and then came back to us. So he's just completed his second five years with the Police Department. We're, again, glad to have him for a long time. Also, I'd like to acknowledge Officer Caris Morel. Caris Morel has just completed 10 years with the city of Bisbee. We have, let's see, I'm going down the list here, sorry. We have Sergeant Brian Swan. Sergeant Brian Swan has completed 20 years with the city of Bisbee, and as of the 31st, has just retired. So we are grateful to his time of service with the city, his 20 years that he gave to the Police Department, to the city of Bisbee and its citizens. And I'd like to present him, sorry, I keep walking away from the mic. We'd like to present him with a plaque we put on the Police Department. And I'll read it, it says, "Brian Swan, congratulations on your retirement. This plaque is given to Sergeant Brian Swan in recognition of 20 years of dedication and loyal service to the Bisbee Police Department. We wish you all the best in your retirement." If I don't say it, Joey will yell at me, because I did 20, I just completed 20 years with the Police Department as well. And here's to 20 more, right? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And congratulations on the voting saying retirements and city issues and such and so forth. And moving along to call to the public. And we have one person signed up to call to the public, Mr. Ken Budge. Call to Mr. Budge.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. When I was a hard act of Paul, so I don't make that sound fair. I come before you again tonight, as I did several months ago, asking for you to work with the Finance Department and give the money that came in from the fire into a special funds, so we know accountability for that. I realize I gave some room, because they were gonna, she up for an audit, and pretty soon, we're gonna be working on budgets again. But just looking at your accounts payable tonight, how do you know what we have left for a new City Hall? What's coming out about that fund, those funds versus something else? Either put it in to the capital improvements fund, or put it into a special fund, so it can be tracked. So, you know, I'm a big believer in, in the Washington Post, it says, "Democracy dies in darkness." So to be quite honest, it just seems to be dying in darkness. And I really want to see the light of day, where the money that came from the City Hall fire, where it's at, where it's been used, and whether we can make a plan ahead of time. I've been informed that they're already looking at possibly hiring somebody out of Phoenix to build us a City Hall, and then we will lease it back because of the money situation. We can't make those decisions unless we have a really good accounting of where we are in the money that we have for that came from those funds. So as I see right now, at the end of December, we have $2,931,000 in the general fund. And if we could break that out and know what's there from the fire, it would be really helpful. I was told a long time ago, and something I've always believed in, was, "Don't tell me, but show me."
Thank you, Ms. Budge. We'll move on to the general business and one accounts payable.
I believe that we have accounts payable in an amount of $336,639.77.
Thank you. We have a second. We have a motion, we have a second, we have questions.
Ms. Budge. I just have one question. It's on, just, I'm not sure, the executive tech, there's a pretty big number there. Is that above and beyond the annual contract, or is that in addition? Or is that just extra fees, or how does that break down?
Those are the fees that they're charging us for the new setup, because that wasn't part of the initial contract with them. So yes, those are additional fees. And we're still well under budget for that, even with those costs.
That was for two people to come in and set up.
Correct, and set up and get everything.
The entire system, I guess.
Everything. And it also, there's charges in there for equipment as well.
Yes, ma'am. All right, Ms. Giacaminho.
Yeah, I just want to clarify on page one, the, I didn't find anywhere. They have listed as flight ticket, past Delta Hotel, at my U.C., verified. So people will pay for the night somewhere in the city tonight. Anyway, that was on page five.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Is Ms. Daggler here? Well, we just need somebody to make the, please.
I couldn't hear.
Okay.
Okay, on, for training, it's under the Mayor and Council. It's listed as a flight ticket. We stayed at the Delta Hilton, that was in a plane. On page five, what's, well, it's under City Auction. And we have pet dish, dog food, from Ace Hardware, oh, it's animal control, no, no. On page six, there's, again, more purchases, screwdrivers, pliers, electrical fine tracks. What's that for? There's a $9,000 charge, same for conflict, what was that for?
That's the wiring that you approved last time for the Togra.
Okay, so what is for the...
Yeah, and there were some additional things. Once Todd got in, you know, we're killing these apart, you see a spark, you fix it. And then I think, I don't have the full spread, but I assume that the wire cutters and screwdriver might be for changing out the thermostats there as well, because the thermostats, I don't have a screwdriver that small, I do.
Under that same thing, you have old Bisbee membership price for $2,400, $9,000, or $5,000 in rent. Says down, 30% down, 70% from then.
Yes.
And that's for...
That was for, yeah, homework, that was a deal.
Also, why is there a $201 charge for water in the cemetery?
Oh, that is actually because of the backflow that somebody had installed a couple of years ago, and I'm gonna discuss it with the cemetery about shutting off that service. Also, there's service to Bisbee Road, the gas service to Bisbee Road, because there's no point in having gas.
Again, like we've talked about, on page seven, there's novel gloves, relay pliers. Every time you turn around, there's gloves, that's on page eight. Is there a reason why we don't, again, inventory, so we're not...
Some of the gloves, I don't know which, do you know which...
Well, there's DOC workers, there's gloves for them.
Yes, we actually do stock those. We buy bulk for the DOC and a lot of the staff. However, we don't carry the ones that, let's say, like the wastewater guys, reflections, we actually end up using the ones like the Fire Department uses, because they're sturdier, they're kind of latex gloves. So you'll see that different charge. And also, when they're using an auger, that's a different type of glove. We don't stock those, because they usually go through about one month.
So they're like $22 a piece then, or is that...
No, that's a box. Yeah, that should be, that should be for the box of bulk of gloves.
What is a ground mount city post that's under operational, like, four streets?
Oh, those are, I think those are the delineators, I believe.
$1,400?
Yes, not just one, it's a lot of them.
Again, you know, it kind of just makes it look like it's more, so...
Yeah, that's, I can't change, I don't think there's enough space in the actual thing to say it's like 50 or 100.
So under the sewer plant?
Yes.
So they're buying all new equipment, they're not using anything? Because we have tool tote, socket set, gloves, lockers, tape measures, ratchet.
They generally don't carry lockers, or they, or things like that break, especially tape measures. Tape measures break a lot.
Right, I need my point, we don't have any antifragile that could be used.
No, because it's wastewater, that's a separate plant.
Okay. And a pipe cutter, pro torch, that's under sewer also. $419, I think it's under sewer, so maybe that...
We have a duct line, for a duct line pipe, yeah.
And then on page 15, I guess it is, we have, we have, what's not using, ten items. Loan payment principal, it's a loan. On page 15, it's for $1,768. And there's another for, when's the principal, when's the interest? $3,680.
That's the principal and interest payment on the back for truck, is a twice-year payment. $15,000.
Ms. Budge.
The question I had was on the loan payments.
Ms. Johns. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of paying the accounts payable, please signify by stating a "I".
"I".
Opposed, same side. Motion carried, you have, listen. If in some agenda, either A through, um, A, approval of the minutes at the regular section of the Mayor and Council held on October 16th, 2018, at 7:00 PM. B, approval of the minutes of the special section of the Mayor and Council held on January 8th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. C, approval of the minutes of the regular section of the Mayor and Council held on January 15th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. D, approval of the resignation of Will Nathan from the Ibisbee Committee. E, approval of the resignation of Kandor Daly from the Parks and Recreation Committee. F, approval of the reappointment going of Bagley to the Public Safety Personnel Retirement Board with a waiver of running the service. G, approval of the reappointment of Audrey Lucia Giacaminho to the Evergreen Cemetery Committee. H, approval of the reappointment of Kalen Cummins to the Park and Recreation Committee with a waiver of running the service. I, approval of the appointment of Sarah Curtis to the Park and Recreation Committee. J, approval of the appointment of Jennifer Ginger Ryan to the Planning and Zoning Commission. K, approval of the appointment of Frank Davis to the Design Review Board. I, I'm sorry, that's an L. Approval of the appointment of Benjamin Luckley to the Design Review Board. M, approval of the appointment of Darren Gilner to the Youth Council as the Adult Advisor. Anybody on the council which in any support for this question?
Yeah, they...
Mayor, it continues, the consent agenda.
Yeah, we'll try. Did, Mr., did you have one?
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, there's more on the consent agenda, it continues.
Oh, I don't want to go.
Please.
Yes, I thought it was too short. We're going to you, as opposed to last week, we went to... And, thank you, thank you. I've only had one page in front of me at the time, I apologize. And approval of Park Facility Rideway Use Permit for the use of City Park for the fifth annual Howl and Crow vintage motorcycle show on Saturday, May 25th, 2019, from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. O, approval of the Park Facility Rideway Use Permit for the use of 100 Toonstone Canyon at the Ironman to the City Park for the Bisbee Pride Parade on Saturday, June 15th, 2019, from 7:30 AM to 11:30 AM. P, approval of the Park Facility Rideway Use Permit for the use of City Park, storage and parking for Bisbee Pride as follows. Daytime, family stage, kid activities, and evening entertainment and dance on Friday, June 14th, 2019, from 12:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Saturday, June 15th, 2019, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 AM. And Sunday, June 16th, 2019, to play down. Q, approval of a Park Facility Rideway Use Permit for the use of Grassy Park with surrounding parking for the Bisbee Pride Village on Friday, June 14th, 2019. Saturday, June 16th, 2019, from 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM. And on Sunday, June 19th, I'm sorry, 16th, 2019, from 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM. R, approval of a Park Facility Rideway Use Permit for the use of Gore Park with four parking spaces for the Bisbee Pride at day stage. Amplifies music slash talks on Friday, June 14th... Amplifies music slash talks on Friday, June 14th, 2019, and Saturday, June 15th, 2019, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. S, approval of a park facility right away use permit for the use of Subway Street for Bisbee Pride to extend the festival to encompass side streets for vendors and events. On Saturday, June 14th, 2019, from 10:00 PM to 1:00 PM. Saturday, June 15th, 2019, from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And Sunday, June 16th, 2019, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. T, approval of a park facility right away use permit for the use of Howell Avenue to Reuse Alley for Bisbee Pride to extend the festival area vendors and events on Friday, June 14th, from 12:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Saturday, June 15th, 2019, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM. And Sunday, June 16th, 2019, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. U, approval of the special event liquor license application submitted by the Bisbee Firefighters Local 2146 for an event to be held at the Eddie King Baseball Field, Coach East Road, Bisbee, Arizona, on Saturday, February 16th, 2019, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Now, Mr. Lindstrom? No, okay. And, Ms. Jackman? Which ones?
K and L.
I, K and item L, alright. Anything else? Do we have a motion?
I moved the U group's consent agenda, items A through J, and M through U.
Thank you. All those, I'm sorry, Ms. Cora?
Councilmember Lindstrom. Councilmember Giacamino. Councilmember Higgins. Councilmember Johns. Councilmember Hanson. Mayor Proton Klein. Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item. Okay, approval of the one of Frank Davis to the Design Review Board. Ms. Jackman.
It actually involved both, I still would like to know what the criteria is for choosing. When you have people that you appoint with waivers for longevity, yet you have somebody who was voted chairman, who does very productive things for the Design Review Board. And is well-liked by the peers on the Design Review Board, yet you do not appoint him back onto the Design Review Board. I just would like to know what criteria is used when you choose. And you replace people that have done a good job and have continually served the community. I mean, the comment was made last time we met that it's a slap in the face. You have a bigger slap in the face for someone who gets voted chairman and then doesn't get reassigned. Yet other people that may not have as much expertise or knowledge of our area get assigned.
Okay. Anything else? Do we have a motion?
So I take it you're not going to give a criteria?
That's right.
That motion that take them off, remove, until you choose to give a criteria. And not just for that, for the whole system in which you're applying.
You don't, you don't have the ability to take them off.
The motion to have that.
You move, do I?
To have them removed from consideration. Do I have that ability?
You do.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion to have Frank Davis removed from consideration, is that the correct word?
Actually, uh, K and.
Yes, word, word.
So the Frank Davis, and, then if I wanted.
Well, we were taking this one at a time. If you want to level up those together, then, then we can do that.
I just did, one question, I just did, when you.
I just, I do have a quick comment on that, just because I have nothing against Frank or Ben, but the process to me, it'd be nice to have an explanation about the criteria for how to pick, so.
First of all, do you second her amended motion?
Yeah.
Now, you can, you can make.
So yeah, I mean, yeah, it's nothing against Frank or Ben. I just think, until we know how the process works a little bit, how we pick and choose, if somebody put on before the others, and yet, it just doesn't make sense to me, so. Yeah, before I approve them, which not to say I won't in the future, but for now, that second, say, like, some explanation.
So Mr. Luckley is, as an example, as an architect, you don't feel that he would be worthy to be on the Design Review Board?
No, I definitely do, yeah. But I'm, that's not what I said, I said, I'm concerned about the process that I have.
Shall I say? Okay. Ms. Cora?
Councilmember Lindstrom.
So the item will be, take them off for now?
That will be a day or day.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Klein. Mayor Smith.
Nay, the motion passes for three. Moving on to new justice. Public hearing, a discussion of possible approval to notice your attempt to adopt ordinance 093-01, amending Article 5.2.4, CM Zone Division 2, and in cocktail lounges and taverns, to permitted uses. Mr. Plon, it's part of the committee.
Mayor and Council, tonight, there is a text amendments, and I did want to provide a little background on why this is being proposed. It was a little time ago that staff was working with applicants who was proposing to do some tenant improvements to the Bismarck building in order to prepare for a new business, comedy club and bar. And it was discovered that, in looking at the parcels, which is typical of anytime you get a request, you want to check the zoning. So it was discovered that the parcels were actually zone CM2, commercial mixed use. Bars, taverns, and that, those types of businesses require C3 and C4 zoning. So again, staff met to discuss this and really looking at what's the quickest solution to resolve the issue. Again, it was, it was felt that by adding taverns and cocktail lounges to CM2, that would be the best approach to this. And again, it's not doing an individual fix, but really looking out for all the parcels within the district. So again, that was, the proposal was to add cocktail lounges and, like I said, taverns to the CM2 uses. So currently, as I mentioned, this is an area of the historic district. And currently, the parcels in red along 20 Stone Canyon and back over here, you've got like Santiago's, Grassy Park, the area, Poppy Window Hotel, and there's a few along here, that are zone C3. So those, by right, would allow for bars and cocktail lounges. There are no C4 parcels that are currently located within the historic district. So here is the parcels that are identified as CM2. So again, you can see there's a lot of businesses right now that exist along the Gulch, are within the CM2, and certainly over on Main Street. So it was felt that by adding the taverns and bars to the permitted uses, in really this area, it mirrors the entertainment district. And that was really the intent, was to allow these types of businesses to, to be within that Eddie King district. So again, and again, it was felt in looking at this, really minimizing any sort of impacts, again, these are all businesses that can have, you know, bars, taverns, like any sort of cocktail lounge or a restaurant. I mean, they, they can all coexist and not create any, any impacts to surrounding properties. So, so this is the area that would allow for those additional uses that really already exist now, so we're not, we're not doing anything different. And again, so looking at the staff analysis, there's, there's 96 parcels that were identified in the CM2 district. And again, by doing this change, we're already allowing those uses to occur where they're existing now. And again, we didn't identify any conflicts, it makes a lot of sense to do this. And, so the Planning and Zoning Commission did hold a public hearing on December 20th. They have forwarded a unanimous recommendation to the mayor and city council for adoption of this text amendment. So again, staff does recommend the text amendment to add taverns and cocktail lounges to the CM2 permitted uses, and also to check the box. Shortly, we'll have a hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission to address some inconsistency in the zoning matrix. But tonight, this is merely the text amendment the council would be making a decision on. So I'll be happy to entertain any questions from the Mayor and Council on this.
Does anybody in the council have, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you for speaking at this conference. Does this reasonably affect our designation of the historic landmark in any way?
No, no, again, this is just merely adding those uses that already exist within the, within the district.
Okay, that would be my concern.
Thank you, anybody else? And I'm looking at, we, we have two people here who signed up for this item. And we will be opening a public hearing, so it'd be proper for them to speak whichever way they wish to speak, in the affirmative or in the negative, is that not correct, Mr.? Mr. Lawyer? Thank you, I just wanted to make sure. Alright, anything of Mr. Smart? Thank you, sir.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I just wanted to say, look, and I know you're aware, but again, I'm, I'm going to be doing some additional responsibilities with the county. So I wanted to point out, Peter Gardner is our planner too on staff, and he will be taking good care of you at the DRB as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I did want to mention that, so you can, maybe you may already know Mr. Gardner, but again, he will be assisting the city busy for those.
Thanks, Mr. Smart.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor Smith.
Alright, I'm going to open the public hearing. And if we have anyone wishing to speak in favor of this, either. Either Mr. Budge or Nancy Weber, are either one of you wishing to speak in favor of this change?
I just wanted to ask a question.
Alright, ma'am. Ben, why don't you come on up and we'll make sure that you're, you're heard. Welcome.
Thank you. I guess I was having the impression this was to refer to CM zoning, not CM2, at least that's how our death, the agenda item. CM2 only refers to the entertainment district? Is that correct? Does he even have the answer?
I mean, these, these parcels mirror the entertainment district, so it basically follows the boundary of the entertainment district.
CM2 zoning, does that refer to any bill, any, any properties outside of the commercial district?
No, these are the only.
Of the entertainment district?
These are the only parcels that are zone CM2.
Okay, in that case, I have nothing to say about this.
Sorry, ma'am, thank you. Alright, anyone else, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this? Again, anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Do you have to be signed up?
No. This, Mr. Evans. I was, I was surprised you hadn't jumped up earlier. Welcome, welcome to the guest.
This is in Bisbee, so I'm involved in this, making the comedy club on the Gulch, directly across from Almo's. Got the brewery on one side, it's got Room 6 on the, on the other side, basically surrounded by drinking establishments. They all have CM2 zoning, and so we, you know, we got, you know, passed through the State Liquor Board and everything, you know, for this, we've done tens of thousands of dollars of renovation on the building. And this, this inconsistency popped up. I, it was a, you know, it's a detail in the, in that CM2 zoning code. Just the particular uses that can be for it. And it was pretty clear that it was either a mistake or, because none of the other bars in town have a CM3. And to get a CM3 to allow for bar, you have to have a lot width of 100 feet. And there aren't any lot widths of 100 feet in Old Bisbee. So there's a, it would, it would end up being, without making this change, there would just be people applying for variances for, for their businesses, just to get them legal to fit into this. I, I think what had happened was, this was some leftover boilerplate that works in other towns. But in Old Bisbee, things are a little bit different. So I'm, I'm hoping that the council will see that this was a mistake that just needs to be corrected, it's a fairly simple thing, and if we put all of the other bars and taverns in town into confines.
Thank you, Ms. James. Is there any, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Mr. Budge? Just for clarification, if I could, we are in public hearing, so the three-minute rule does not work in, only in the public hearings. So you have up to actually 15 minutes.
No, I'm not taking that much, but thank you, Mayor Castle, my name's Ken Budge, living in Old Bisbee, in fact, right above a lot of this. I come 49 wondering why we're changing 96 buildings into this type of use. Now, I understand it's an entertainment district, and I do believe the Gulch is what it is, and probably very well can handle another bar situation. But, but honestly, you look, you look at these two maps, this is what's there now, and this is what you're converting. So you're going from, from 20 zone buildings, adding 96, so basically 116 buildings that could become bars. Or taverns, or whatever, without any proper notification to any residents around. Now, as one that was on the DRB, just for us, for a homeowner to change a building and to, and to add a, a, a small addition, you have to notify everybody within 300 feet. So that they have a chance to come down and say, well, wait a minute, this could affect one thing or other. This just, or the place that all the way through, 90s or 100, whatever I said, buildings can now can just become a bar or whatever. I mean, it, it seems to me that's what special use permits are all about. Special use permits is, is if chuckleheads or whatever it is wants to do it, they go in, apply for a special use, everybody within 300 feet is notified, they get the chance to have a hearing. I know this was a planning and zoning hearing held on the December 20th, I was out of town, most of my neighbors didn't even know it existed. When I went to talk to them, they said, well, I didn't know this was happening, we didn't know anything about it, because, you know, it's just publicly noticed generally, but you don't get a letter like you do in a 300-foot radius. So what I'm asking for here is to consider, and I'll take, I'll take umbrage to what you said, where it was just, just the same use that's already there. The, the use is not already there. There is bars and, and other stuff that have been grandfathered in, but it's not generally used in 96 buildings. So it's not that type of a use for cocktail lounges and taverns. So as a resident, that's the whole thing about CM. CM means mixed use. You have, you have residence, and you have commercial, and we have to, we have to get along together. And if you look at that group up there, look at all the homes that surround, all that yellow. And there's hundreds and hundreds of homes where sound and noise and all kinds of things affect all kinds of stuff. I'm a firm believer in, in, in tourism. I'm a firm believer in having an area designated for entertainment. Part of the entertainment district was not just to produce bars and places for people to drink, but places you could have shows, places you could put art, stuff. It, it wasn't just about drinking. This is all about just nothing more than drinking. And not I'm against drinking, but what I'm trying to. And not I'm against drinking, but what I'm trying to say is, have to look at the residents around and consider, why are we going this way with a big blanket thing? Why not go back to special use, which is, we can take each case on its own merits, just like we did at the DRB, you come before us, paying on the location, where it's at, how many neighbors are affected, they're all notified, makes much more sense than just wiping this 96 buildings into this use with no comeback for any of the residents in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak against this item? Anyone else wishing to speak against this item? Ms. Cornado, have we received any letters, emails, calls?
Nothing.
Pony Express?
Nothing.
Nothing. Now, close this public meeting. Does anyone have any questions to Mr. Smart?
So if it, if it passed and it became all yellow, does that mean that they can serve up all things orange?
Well, of course you have.
Well, that's.
Each, yeah, each, just to keep it accurate, if somebody wanted to put a liquor establishment each, beneath those yellow places, they still have to go to the liquor board, they still have to, there's still notifications that have to be made, it's just simply that if the zoning allows it to happen, it doesn't allow you just to turn your place into a bar. Sir?
So each one, now my, kind of my question is, so each one still individually has to get approval for each establishment, right?
Yes. Yes, sir. Can I rat Mr. Smart?
That's correct, they have to apply, they have to apply the Arizona Department of Labor License and Control. Normally, the city makes a recommendation, I believe, for that, so again, I don't think it's just, this is going to happen overnight, they're going to have to still get those approvals. And it just is adding those, you know, cocktails and taverns to the permitted use list that already exists.
And each one of those goes to the council for approval?
Okay. And I guess my other concern is, I mean, this is the problem I think we've had for the last two years, is, I can appreciate Ken coming up, but where's the people that, where's the citizens of Bisbee, I guess? There's no emails, there's no calls, there's no people here, so if people are against this, I'd like to see them.
Yes, ma'am.
So it does seem to me that there is a bit of discrepancy, if homeowners are required to make the map of what we're all discussing on Long Island, if homeowners are required to notify everyone within 300 feet, why aren't businesses required, if they're going to open something, you have to notify homeowners within 300 feet? How could we implement a change like that? I mean, would that be a requirement, or is there something like that in place?
Yeah, and typically, you know, when it's a permitted use, I mean, there's no, really no notification. If you're going through a rezoning or a special use permit, then you'll get notification about when this is a permitted use, but again, there is that extra layer, because it has to go through the Arizona Department of Labor License and Control, and I think the council is still going to have an opportunity to make a decision on that. Typically, when it's a permitted use in the zoning district, you won't get, get that notification unless it's, like I said, rezoning and condition use permit or something that requires that type of notification.
Yes, sir. It would, it would, in many of these cases, it would be, when it comes to the council, that neighbors would show up and so forth and say, I don't want this because it's too noisy or whatever. All this does is allow them to actually take that step of applying if they want a bar there.
Yeah.
Well, I'm looking at you, and I'm trying to explain to, yes, ma'am?
My question is, if we're just talking one business here, why can't they apply for a special use permit?
Well, I mean, and there are several, I mean, I don't have the list, but I know there's numerous along, especially along the Dolce. Now, again, to go back and say we're going to issue a special use permit, they've already been existing and operating, so again, now you're asking them to get a special, I mean, the thing is, it makes more sense to actually add that as a permitted use to the zoning district, but you're talking about the businesses that are already there.
As the reg, thank you, Mayor and Council. As the regulations are currently written, any use is either permitted, special, or non-existent. This currently is in the non-existent. The council does not currently have the right to grant a special use permit for a tavern in CM2. Any that were issued, that have been issued, there are taverns that have been issued in CM2 or issued in error, but the short answer is, there's no right right now to do it. The council would directly make it a special use, split the, split maybe, but there's no, no authority now to do this individual case that way.
Mr. Lindstrom? No. Did that answer your question?
Kind of.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve a motion intended to adopt orders 0-29-01, pending Article 5.2.4, CM Zone Division 2 adding cocktail lounges and taverns to permitted uses.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornado?
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes 6 to 11. Head number four, discussion of possible approval of a viable use permit for Cheer and Power to Community Health Center to be able to park their mobile, I'm sorry, mobile medical clinic in front of 312 Arizona Street, Wayne Mall, Operations Management, in council.
About a month ago, myself and Chief Chachavi were contacted by Cheer Cowell. As many of you know, they're in the middle of a very large remodel, and they're kind of cramming in some smaller offices. They have a mobile clinic that is fully capable and licensed, and they would like to, they wish to park it in front of their business. It's possible it might go across the street in front of their, what's going to be their pharmacy as well. It's just how it ends up being placed and works out best for them, so that they can actually deal with the overflow, because as I know, taking my children there, you take a father and two kids into that little clinic that they're using right now, it's a little mess. So initially, they asked for, for just Wednesdays, and I told them that, well, if you're going to be open, might as well ask for Monday through Friday, that way that they can service more people more efficiently, until their clinic has gone through this major remodel, rebuild, whatever it is. Albert and I, well, sorry, Chief Chachavi and I also suggested that we probably bring this to council, just so that more people are made aware of it, in case anybody gets any questions, and if there's any better ideas that the council might have, that we try to work through those.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the right of use permit for Cheer Cowell and Community Health Center to be able to park their mobile medical clinic in front of 312 Arizona Street.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Here we go. Those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye. Aye, motion accepted. All right, those opposed, same side. Here we go, motion passes unanimously. Head number five, discussion of possible approval of a YPTEL service agreement to provide phone back service at City Hall. Ms. Cornado, City Clerk?
In the year in 2014, before you tonight, is a service agreement contract for your agreement with YPTEL. They are a provider of VoIP, the voice phone service, and the service agreement is going to be at a monthly cost of $411 per month, comes out to $27.99 per phone and $19.99 per fax. We're going to be saving about $800 per month compared to what we're paying right now. So we found cost savings in that, and thought it would be a good idea to go with this company. This system is able to be picked up and taken to any new location that we go to, so.
Right, now, as I understand it, it's saving to about $10,000 a year.
A year, yes.
Over what, right now, and we pick them up, take them to a new building.
It's really flexible. Plug it in, and we're ready to run. Yes.
Questions?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So Ashley, when you guys were looking for, and I know this was backwards, because I remember in the November 7th, the city manager made a comment about if you add, I think it was, what was it, VoIP or whatever, for Microsoft 365, I'm just wondering if, like, did this go out to work, did you do anything, or was it YPTEL or something?
This was, this was recommended by our IT company.
Exactly.
Yes, absolutely, and, you know, it kind of helped us make a decision as well, and we did price out other places. On average, phones with the system are 35, with what we're getting in this package, $35 per phone per month. There are some that are less expensive per month, but with this, we're getting voicemails that are sent to your city cell phones or to your emails, we're able to do video conferencing, it just has a lot of bells and whistles that we're getting with this. So we did, I did compare it with other companies, yes.
Okay, and, you know, because I did a little bit of research.
Sure.
And, let me see, what the, my concerns are that they don't seem to have a lot of commercial clients, they can't really, I mean, a service for residential customers, and their lease office is a house that they were leasing, and since they're kind of.
A lot, a lot of these, the people that are doing services like this, they do work out of their homes, and that is normal.
Okay, because they treat the outdoor.
It's not considered like an off, I mean, their facility or, you know what I mean? They, people do work out of their homes. They're able to walk into our computers and, you know, fix things on our computers that way, they'll be able to do the same thing with our home system.
Okay, okay, so your experience with YPTEL so far?
It's been wonderful.
It's been good. All right.
Any other questions, sir?
Is this something for the local, like Cable One, or?
Were you using Cable One for the internet for this service?
Okay, but they couldn't do the phones also?
They don't do the phones, no.
So nobody around here can do the phones?
Not here locally, like in Bisbee, no, we don't have any of that. I mean, there's, the voice are everywhere, I mean.
The ones I looked at, I found it hard to find them in YPTEL. If it was referred to by Executech, I know that, don't they get like commission fees from YPTEL?
I don't know what their agreement to each other is. I mean, we're getting great service with Executech, so, I mean, it made it a little bit of an easier transition for us, knowing that they've worked with them in the past, and not have any problems. These phones are coming pre-programmed, we're having to plug them in and play.
How many companies have we?
I looked at about four of them, I can pull a list and send them to you, I'd be happy to.
Ms. Giacamino?
You're looking at a three-year contract?
Yes.
What's the advantage to a month-to-month, is there a big price tag?
This is just their standard contract.
So if we find down the road that it's not for key and stuff, right, for your contract, is there an exit, is there an exit fee, like if you sell a phone, you have to pay to get out of service?
I can't remember this one. Hold on just a second. It had a very basic agreement. I don't have to look it up, I don't see that right here, their out clause on here.
Also, they're, they're exclusively in Utah, are they nationwide, or are they just regional, or?
Like Councilmember Johns mentioned, they do have a provider here in Arizona.
In your due diligence, did you check the benefit of this experience?
I did, they've had one complaint in the last three years.
Out of how many?
Um, I don't remember.
One for one, that's not.
No, 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 there was more than one, there was more than one.
Any other questions? So when they come in for like onsite?
This is all being done over computer. They're, they are literally going to ship us phones in a box, we plug them in, they work, as long as CenturyLink transfers the numbers.
So if something's wrong, would be something wrong with hardware?
You call them up, and they're able to log into their backend of the system and take care of any hardware issue. It's a lot like our IT service right now, they're able to log in and take care of any issue, whether it be on the server, whether it be on a desktop.
Is there any way to do it with like a year contract?
This is what they came to me out of, I can check and see if that's something that they're going to be willing to do, this is going to push us back another two weeks, and we don't have any other phone system.
A lot of the stuff I saw, offers month-to-month, or like Tony said, it's month-to-month or year, it's rare to see a three-year.
Is that for commercial? I mean, I know you can, you can certainly get that in a small office or your home or something, but I don't know that with the amount of phones that we have, I believe that this is a standard procedure, and of course, we're operating under the situation of having to have phones, and so, Ms. Cornado needed to move on this, and so.
Obviously, to move on stuff quick, as someone might not know, I need to, you'd be able to say like, hey, we have some time to research.
We didn't have time in this case in order to do that, yes.
Any other comments?
Yeah, so if we are unhappy with the, I think I, is there a, do you want to look and see if there's?
Yes, I'll look into that for sure.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve a YPTEL service agreement to provide phone slash back service at City Hall.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes 5 to 2. Head number six, discussion of possible approval to accept a letter of intent not to renew the intergovernmental agreement for legal services between the City of Bisbee and the Cochise County Attorney's Office to include early termination. As you recall, the council voted to not extend the request for the contract extension, and at that shoulder thereafter, a letter was received by us from the Cochise County Attorney's Office asking for early termination of their services, and that is what's before us. And do we have a motion or?
I move to accept the letter of, or the intent not to renew the intergovernmental agreement for legal services between the City of Bisbee and Cochise County Attorney's Office to include the request for a reserve action.
I'll second. Do we have? Yes, ma'am. Where I was asking.
Well, I, you know, prepared that we're not going to, at this point in time, renew. I, I think that the time that we were talking about this, um, I, I think we wanted to go out and see if there was any other options out there, um, and it's kind of turned around to where there's never any ties now, but, um, I, I have an issue, I guess, with letting them out of the contract early, just because we will need legal services at least until June, and that will give us enough time to, you know, hopefully we'll get people to apply, so, I mean, I don't know who's gonna move or how it's gonna go, but I would kind of like to separate the, you know, the motion that we accept the, you know, the, the letter not to have the IGA for legal services, and then as a separate vote, whether to allow the early termination.
We have already indicated that we, when, when it came before us, we voted against renewing the contract. And so what they're saying is, you voted against renewing the contract, and we want it out early for the June thirtieth, so that's a motion.
Okay, but there is no date on this motion, and the last thing I had was an email from Rick that said end of January, and it's February yet, so I think this motion is misleading, and I think that we need a date from the county attorney's office to say when they want out, and I don't know that that motion even, you know, are they asking me that out tonight?
Yes.
All right. So that's what was just moved, the second it is to have a time, it's not as of after tonight, and that's what's on the floor, just so we're all clear.
That is what they requested.
I have that, um, sort of question, I guess. Yeah, I'm kind of just inclined where, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of turned into this big thing now, where we just wanna kind of go look and see what our options were, and all of a sudden, depending where they're trying to turn it around.
No, you got very insulting, and so did Ms. Jacaminho, and so did Miss Klein, so...
Yeah, so, it's almost like a little kid taking his ball and running home.
No, it's, I don't wanna represent a body like that.
I think, doesn't matter if you want it, I think you're under a contract, at least fulfilling, it's under your contract.
Well, then vote against it.
I'm just making comments here, I'm gonna...
Whatever, then.
Well, yeah, I think, you know, it'll give us a chance to still be covered until June, and then at that time, you can still be looking all the way out, you know. The reason I put another item on the agenda is because we have fully applied or put out our, I think all we put on is the air around leads, which we really need to broaden our search, so until we actually find some, you know, some candidate technique, maybe a standard contract, it's not gonna work.
Well, it is kind of, you know, I, it becomes very ironic when one or more members of the council are indicating that the legal advice they're getting is substandard, and yet they wanna turn around and vote to keep that legal advice that is somewhat puzzling. And I believe that that is the exact question before the county attorney's office, and the exact reason that they've asked for an early out, is because they, their, their opinions and the, their legal advice was questioned as to accuracy.
So, I mean, we can't keep doing their job, I mean, just because I have one or somebody else has an opinion, I mean, in the medical field, doesn't mean I'm gonna stop doing my job because somebody doesn't like me, and I'm still gonna do my job.
No, you have no trust in us, and we feel the same about you, that's why we...
But you're still under contract.
Yeah, for that, so they're not gonna...
Um, whatever our opinions are up here, it's been pointed out to me by you, Rick, several times, that the bulk of your work is with the city employees, and they all trust you very much, and I think your advocacy, though, and that's where my concern is with you leaving the contract early, is that they are not gonna have, you know, someone to give it the phone and call, and so that's my issue with terminating the contract early. I think that for a few things that we have coming up, sure, we can completely vote to retain someone else, we don't have to trust you, but as far as the city employees go, I think that you do need to fulfill your con, some more of your contract for that, not necessarily for us.
Yes, ma'am.
Just for clarification, uh, Mr. Hanson?
Little, little, little question.
Just for clarification, Mr. Hanson indicated just a few minutes ago that I was very insulting at that meeting. I don't think it was very insulting, in fact, that I said I was very pleased with, um, Ms. Arnuño and what she's done to represent the city, so I don't think that's very insulting. I just want your clarification, thank you.
Any other comments? In the...
You know, this is just a, an example of how this council needs to consider the consequences of their action, and this one went totally, totally south, and there were things that were said, that were insulting, and were implying that the legal advice that we were giving was not accepted, acceptable, and I do not blame the, the Board of Supervisors and the attorney, the city attorney, or county attorney, for not pointing to this council. And I just wish that when decisions are made, that you take into account what you are doing to the people of Bisbee, to the employees, and people that are affected by your decision, and what is best for this, and this is just a classic example.
Anything else? Yes, ma'am?
You know...
Yeah, did you, yes, ma'am.
We had a new council come in, and, um, I think we can all remember back to, we were a new council, you know, newly owned council, and just trying to learn the roads, trying to figure out, you know, how to, you know, go about daily business, and so I think when they, you know, when the question was, can we look to see what other options that, you know, are out there? I don't think it was a, you know, we definitely don't want this, but we just wanna see what options there may be, and I think as council, we have that right to see, and, you know, we were told that the Board of Supervisors were insulted, and, you know, they, I, I mean, I've known Pat Coughlin and English for a long time, and they would do the same thing, they would look at all options if it was best for their constituents out there, for the county, to see what's out there, and I don't think that as council for us, I, I think we have that option, and we should look at what's best. It doesn't mean that, you know, it's cut and dry and no, but let's just see what else is out there.
That was, that was fifty percent of it, ma'am. The other fifty percent was that one or more members of the council indicated that the legal advice was substantial. That is a fact.
I think that that was, but...
The, the recording is available. Ms. James?
You can, you can be happy with some aspects of it, doesn't mean you're happy with, not happy with everything, this is like an all-or-nothing thing, with you guys, it's bad.
Could, could you put a word on that?
No, no.
What exactly do you...
Ms. Hanson, you don't, you're not learning that. Ms. Jacobin, you are reading.
Uh, yeah, the union is a upper-down board, and there is always the option of table or something, if, uh, if, if the council wasn't ready to make a decision on that, and somebody could have very easily, it was plenty of time, somebody could have very easily made a motion to table it, and, and put it off the agenda after more research hadn't been done, but that option was not taken by anyone, so, uh, the idea that you wanted more time, if you wanted more time, the way you get more time is to table, it wasn't tabled, it was a lower-down.
Ms. Hanson?
Actually, no, that's not true, there, there was a motion to table it, but it was to table it for three months, and that was...
That's a case.
It doesn't, it has to be ta, it has to be brought up at the next...
Oh, okay, my memory's not that great, uh...
No, Mr. Lindstrom, it wasn't, Mr. Lindstrom asked if he could make a motion to table it, when he asked if he could, and I said, no, he couldn't. Ms. Cornyn?
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Has there been a motion?
Yes, there was, it was motioned by, uh, Councilmember Higgins and seconded by the mayor.
Okay, but did, were the words, uh, did you put a, a date or time or a date in there?
No.
I would request...
We didn't have that, uh, I, I can amend that.
I would request the motion be amended to a meeting.
So that's effective tonight.
Correct.
All right, that is my motion. Yes, that, um, I, I move to accept the letter of intent not to renew the intergovernmental agreement for legal services between the city of Bisbee and the Cochise County Attorney's Office to include early termination effective term, second.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacaminho?
May.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
May.
Councilmember Hanson?
I'd love to say may, but I have to say may because I have to put out the...
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
May.
Mayor Smith?
Um, we left the, um, aye, so...
What, what is, what is the vote?
Um, three ayes and four nays.
Motion is repeated. All right, we, I just wanna say that we will continue to take care of Ashley and Dwayne and Carrie and the chiefs, um, all those folks, really, really enjoyed working with them and looking forward to doing that for the next few months, uh, but nothing in my contract, in our contract, obligates us to sit in this seat. I don't have a second. Public hearing not notice of intent to increase, increase rates for sewer services, Ms. Bagman.
This is just a public hearing, um, on whether or not to increase the sewer fees. There were two options, um, two, two rate schedules that were provided, um, and City Attorney Owen suggested that a work session be scheduled, so the council can decide which, um, rate scheduling, that would be probably actually, you know, moved, moved the ordinance forward, so this is just a public hearing.
Right, and this is nothing more than indicating that I will be, um, making a decision on what, what those rates will be, this is not voting on the rates at this particular time, this is simply a formality of the term. Yes.
Is there any way, um, that we can be provided with, I might be wrong with this, but when you first filed this sewer plan, you wanted to know, there was a set...
We really need to find what it's like, guys.
There was a, was a set increase that they had projected, I was just curious if that's applicable there.
I think that, that's, we should have those records of what the original rates, rate schedule was.
Right, just to look that up to compare to the analysis, okay, thank you, sorry.
Any questions, Ms. Bagman? You have?
Yeah, I have one more question, she didn't have to go up there. Is there any way we can also get a, um, a listing of, um, the percentage of low income and fixed income people do have at the Chinese, thank you.
Thank you. All right, then I'll open the public hearing, public hearing's open. Do we have anybody that wants to speak in favor of holding, um, let me get that urban show up, please? Uh, anyone wanting to speak in favor of notice of intent to increase sewer rates for, uh, increase rates for the sewer service? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Hearing now, anyone wishing to speak against, uh, the intent to increase rates? Anyone wishing to speak against? Yes, ma'am? Well, wait, wait, you get up there and the microphone. All right, and would you, would you please give us your name?
My name is Deborah Bearden, and, um, this is my first council meeting, so I'm a little untroubled.
Well, well.
I, one question I have is, how far are we on collecting unpaid sewer bills?
We have, we have, uh, since we instituted the amnesty about, what, a year, year, little a year ago, we're just under six hundred thousand dollars that we've collected.
How much is still owed?
Well, that's a good question, um, that, a, as we go, we find out that things happen, and some of that number that was out there, a one point two million of uncollected, is, is bogus, because as we're going, we find all of a sudden that so many, uh, houses aren't even there anymore, it's just on our rollers, and so it becomes difficult to give you that number, uh, but several hundred thousand dollars more, I can tell you that.
You know, I don't have a problem, you know, paying my sewer bill, we do it all the time, we pay for two houses, and we pay for the...
Yes, ma'am.
But it really is hard, especially when you're retired, that you're paying and paying, and the bill goes up, and the bill goes up, and it's really getting kind of high, so, you know, I, I want to see more done about, you know, collecting.
Yes, ma'am.
To get it done, and I, and so that's my only gripe. The only other thing I would ask is, I'm sitting back there, and it's really hard to hear what you're saying, so maybe if you guys could talk more into your mics, then I could hear you, 'cause I, I really am struggling to hear you.
We apologize.
Well, I'm, I'm old, but, you know, I really wanna hear.
Welcome to your first meeting, we hope to see you somewhere. Thank you for your input.
My doctor told me about it, so anyhow, they, you know, if we could do more about collecting.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I wouldn't give, give so bad about paying, but, you know...
I've definitely with you, and until a year and a half ago or so, we hadn't done any of that, so, we're six hundred thousand dollars ahead of where we were.
Well, that's gonna be better, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else wishing to speak against? In the back row, please come on in. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Doris Turner, and what I would like to ask you during the public session meeting, take other, um, other things into consideration, size of building, and I have said that before, I have an eleven hundred square foot duplex with one person living there right now, my sewer bill, or the owner's sewer bill, is a hundred fifty dollars and forty cents, that is twice as much as a big house with ten people, so something, maybe there can be a discussion to make it more equitable. I don't think people would mind paying a sewer bill or sewer garbage if it's fair and it's not a group economy based.
Yes, ma'am, and I can tell you that that has been the topic of discussion with, uh, the city manager, certainly has been involved in, in looking... has been involved in looking at some changes. You can and will. Anyone else speak, wishing to speak against? All right. Ms. Cornado, have we received any mail, email, telephone calls?
No, sir.
We have none. Thank you. I'll now close this.
I did want to let you know that the city website was down. I tried to email and there was no connection. And so the people tried to email or try to contact, and there was no way.
Thank you for that. I'll now close the meeting. Now, Ms. Giacamino?
I'm kind of along the lines of what Ms. Turner had said. I have people approach me, I guess, concerned and complaining about Airbnbs, why they're being charged to regular houses or being charged as a motel. Because they're not a good thing to use for... And that's got to be a discussion also that needs to be looked at because with the increase of the...
Yes, ma'am. And that is precisely some of the conversations that we've had about that. Absolutely. Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have a motion? Well, we...
No motion. It's solely a public hearing.
Okay, we just had a public hearing. I'm just... Item number eight, discussion of possible approval of the revised visitor center management job description. And Mr. Higgins?
Leslie, would you like to go ahead?
Sure.
Ms. Jones? If I might, we do have a speaker signed up, and I'll get to you as soon as this John's over.
Okay. Bill and I agreed to put this on the agenda because originally there were some complaints from people in my board about the visitor's center... I'm sorry. Visitor center manager and also the tourism director job not being filled quickly. And then it came out, well, we might do that when we have our strategic planning session on the 16th. And we talked and we thought it would be good idea to put on to have our HR manager, Mr. Duchon, revise that job description himself and put it on the agenda for tonight. And so it could go out and pack it, merchants could look at it, and anyone who wanted to speak to that tonight could speak tonight, and we can discuss it and hopefully get that new job description approved so that we can get a person into a position as quickly as possible if that's the merchant's priority. And if there are other things that need to be discussed, there is a special session on the 12th coming up where this can be addressed. But if we get our decisions made tonight, then we can hopefully get someone hired. We are sitting on a pool of about 20-plus applicants. So I know there are people signed up for help with the public. I really do want to hear what you have to say of this position that affects your business and so we can get a good decision made as soon as everyone in our line or anyone who owns a business that is affected by tourism in this town would like.
Yeah, this was brought up by a number of merchants. And, you know, they were quite adamant about getting this before the council as quickly as possible, and I agree that we should. We went ahead and had the HR manager put together a job description. And since that time, there's been quite a bit of citizen input. I've talked to a number of people about this. And it turns out that this is a little more complicated. There's, we only have one person signed up to speak on this, but there's a lot of people that have given the input onto this. And so at this point here, I think that it might not be a bad idea to have that special session on the 12th and get all the interested parties together and go over this point by point and really dig deep into just what it is that the one visitor's manager do and the qualifications that are paid. So I'm not so sure that I'm ready to move ahead with this tonight.
Thank you. We have Mr. Page assigned. Rob Page, you want to...
Well, sir. Mr. Mayor, Council, I'll be really brief. And thank you, my councilmembers, for bringing this up tonight. I appreciate that we're going to have a work session on this. This is going to be very important. By way of contrast, for this particular job, I'm going to encourage you to fill this as quickly as possible because there are a lot of things that are dependent going into the season on this position you can fill. My biggest concern coming into this primarily was the salary range. When you think about the amount of, let's say, the amount of money that this position brings into the community, this is the only department that actually generates revenue. And as the only department generates revenue, i.e., everything that we do is tied to that bed tax, if I'm correct. I may be wrong, so pardon me if I am. But for a way of contrast, our business pays a part-time manager of social media and marketing. That pay rate starts at $36,000 a year. And we're just one small business downtown. Granted, we've got quite a few employees, but for the contrast, when you look at the City of Visby and how much revenue the city brings in on visitors and tourism, you think, how much money do we want to spend on that person? And what do we want that job description really to say? The job is vitally important to what we do downtown. And I think Jen Luria especially did a phenomenal job for very low pay. We're very impressed with the work that she did. Wish we could do her back. It's going to be some very good shoes to fill. So I appreciate you listening to me and I appreciate your consideration of hopefully more pay in the future and a job description that really details the kind of work and the value that this position brings back to the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Comment, Council?
I just want to echo what Mr. Page said. I did some research, and it is very obvious from the time, excuse me, from the time that the lodging tax was put into place that our revenue has gone up because the amount of the 1% step in the 1% increase for the bed tax bought in has increased every year. And I thank Fred Miller for putting that information together. I also, you're spot on about the lodging determines an awful lot of the, for 200...
Arizona's Office of Tourism reports has a standard way of breaking down the average domestic overnight, and it's $277 total. It breaks down to $94 for lodging and $72 for food and beverage, $47 transportation, $36 retail, and $29 for recreation. So you can see that the lodging and that overnight destination really does increase our revenue here. And it's vital that we have somebody in that tourism, tourism marketing that knows how to do this and knows where to advertise so that we can get that overnight destination and increase that. I'd like what you did, the two of you did with the description, job description. However, I would like to table that so that we can discuss it at the work session because I think that that's going to be what's going to guide us as far as what the description should be.
I'll second that. That was a formal motion.
Yes, I move that we table it.
All right, so we have a motion to table. And we have a second. My only comment is going to be that when you look at a director of tourism, countrywide, the salary range is about 46 to 64 with a median range of 52,000 a year. I was just mentioning that. Way of passing if that's what the citizens and the council votes for. Great. And Mr. Lindstrom?
No, this is one, and quite a popular one, but I just feel like this is something that I would see an HR manager, just at the job description. So I don't know. I don't know why we're doing this for a job description that has a special session.
Okay. We're doing that to get citizen input because we have a large number of citizens that want input to include, I know that I've been asked for the ability for several citizens or business owners to sit on the selection board with HR and the city manager for the selection of this person. So we have, that's why...
Yeah, I mean, that's a good thing. That's from past experiences on our council. We don't do that normally, so...
That is correct. Typically, we won't be looking for a job that has somebody out amongst people like this, so... Yes?
I guess my concern is, I mean, I agree with the fact that, yeah, we shouldn't have people, you know, to sit in on the decision-making, but it just seems like we're prolonging it a little. And one of the big concerns voiced by Rob Page is, you know, leaving somebody in that position. And you guys are saying that you're a pool. That needs to be changed, that we can't effectively start hiring with that pool of people.
We have a motion. We have a second. To table.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Nay.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Nay.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. I am going to just publicly indicate that it is a work session. We certainly hope to have involvement of people there that can provide meaningful information for us to move forward in filling this position. So please.
When is that work session?
That is next Tuesday at 5:30 at the City Center. Well, we can make, I can make a special session. That's fine. That's fine. If the council's going to be ready to move on and so forth, that's, and we're going to have, if we have the citizen input that we need and so forth, then that's great. The HR director will be there making furious notes, and we can certainly, we'll make a special session. Moving on. Item number nine. Let me give a discussion of possible approval of the recommendation of Visby Arts Commission to fund a grant application for Dance History of Visby by Rita Marie Berry for $500 from the Visby Arts Commission Fund. Ms. Higgins?
I'd like to remind everybody that the Visby Arts Commission raises their own money and the money that we've gotten, grants, is money that's raised by the Visby Arts Commission through its fundraising efforts. This isn't, this isn't city funds. It's not chunged out, but it's entirely of money that was raised by the Arts Commission. And we add that this is our funding time of the year, and we have a number of them tonight. And in the packet, there's quite detailed descriptions of what each of these individuals would like to do. They're all different. They all have some ideas, and they're all very interesting things. So having said all that just once, and I move to approve the funding of grant application for Dance History of Visby by Rita Marie Berry for $500 from the Visby Arts Commission.
We have a motion. We have a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by stating aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 10. Discussion of possible approval of the recommendation of the Visby Arts Commission to fund a grant application for the Return of Turkey Waltzer's 2019 for $500 from the Visby Arts Commission Fund. Ms. Higgins?
I move to approve the funding of the grant application for the Return of Turkey Waltzer's 2019 for $500 from the Visby Arts Commission Fund.
I second.
Do we have discussion? All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 11. Discussion of possible approval of the recommendation from the Visby Arts Commission to fund a grant application for Aurora Brings Color into the World by Judy Murray for $422.50 from the Visby Arts Commission Fund. Mr. Higgins?
I move to approve the funding of the grant application for Aurora Brings Color into the World by Judy Murray for $422.50 from the Visby Arts Commission Fund.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 12. Discussion of possible approval of the recommendation from the Visby Arts Commission to fund a grant application for the 2019 Tucson Symphony Concert for $1,000 from the Visby Arts Commission Fund. Mr. Higgins?
I move to approve the funding of a grant application for the 2019 Tucson Symphony Concert for $1,000 from the Visby Arts Commission Fund.
I'll second. Any discussion?
I just have one question. This will actually be $1,100.
For nonprofit organizations, you can go up to $1,000. For individuals, we try to keep it around 500. We have been funding the Visby Community Corps' effort to bring...
All I'm talking about is that he's got $500.
Oh, it has a... No, actually, it should be...
We'll correct that.
We'll make that correction. Anything else? All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 13. Discussion of possible approval of the recommendation from the Visby Arts Commission to fund a grant application for Creative Clay Arts Activities by Tonya Berksen for $500 from the Visby Arts Commission Fund.
I move to approve the funding of the grant application for Creative Clay Arts Activities by Tonya Berksen for $500 from the Visby Arts Commission Fund.
Seven. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 14. Discussion of possible corruption to staff regarding the city attorney's search. Mr. Lindstrom?
Can I just put this on there? Because talking to Ashley, I was asked where we are advertising for this position, and the only place we're advertising is Arizona V Cities. So she said in order to be able to advertise further, you have to specify how we want to hire.
Right now, we're just going out for requests for qualifications. I mean, there's many different options that council could choose. I mean, if they want to open the position to, as an employee, they could do that. We could continue our search RFP, but we can't really open a job and post it out there without a job to open.
So I guess it might help to maybe clarify what we want as a council, just so we can... So we're not getting any, well, as far as what I heard, we're not getting any interest in RFQ. So maybe we need to change it to where we're actually getting interest, and we can throw out there, you know, universities and the national recruiting sites. So any recommendations on how I can word it? So any recommendations on how I can word it? So we can vote on it, I guess, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's completely at the council's discretion, how they want to move forward.
So what are your proposals, sir?
So this will be the time to say we want it as a city employee, we want it as a contract employee.
Are you ready to do that tonight?
At least we need to, well, it's kind of, this kind of is an emergency situation. So with the help of the council.
I don't, we can't vote today. You can, we can provide direction to staff, but we can't vote today.
Have any ideas?
Well, I mean, we put the RFQ back out.
Correct, yes.
So how much longer do we have on the last?
Let me, I can check that really quick.
Okay.
Is it? I was just informed it's the seventeenth, so next Thursday.
Next Thursday, okay, and what do our, what does City Code say about RFQs? Are there limitations on those, that we can only advertise on the city website and with the league, or do we have other options?
There's other options.
What are the other options?
Hang on just a moment.
So I was told you're only, you're only advertising in Arizona League of Cities at this time?
On our website, on the league, we've put it out in the paper, so it has gone out in different avenues, yes.
Okay, so it has gone out to every avenue available, so at this point?
The paper, our website, online, yes.
The league, and so on and after.
That's every avenue that we can possibly use at this point?
Well, we need to keep in mind also, I mean, an attorney needs to be licensed in the state of Arizona to practice law here, so searching nationally isn't going to do us a whole lot of good unless they are licensed to practice law here in Arizona.
Well, yeah, but attorneys have licenses in northern states sometimes.
And also Tucson and Phoenix, there's a lot of options in Tucson and Phoenix also, you know, there's surrounding areas.
Ms. Cornet, may I suggest that you contact the Arizona State Bar and ask them if they have a site that we can have a touch?
Sure, I sure can.
Please, take me there.
Well, that, I mean, as long as we're, I mean, universities, we have law schools here, there seems to be a lot that we could be doing, and this is a critical situation, and I feel like there is a need to do that. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, what would be the implications of shifting us from a contract position to a city employee? Like, you know, I'm getting that, but what's the difference, I think that's what.
For one, they're exclusive to us. They, and that would depend on their how old they are, salary. But they could still be exclusive to us, and if they, if we're contracting outside, they could have multiple clients. And they could put someone else first. And that's really, that's really it. City of Bisbee's had a vote for the last ten years.
Correct.
So the new direction is more advertising.
Sure.
And see what, where we're at next. I'm sorry, is it Thursday?
Thursday. Oh, okay, sorry, it is this Thursday, not next Thursday, my apologies. But we can, we can extend it, we can extend the RFQ, put it out there again, contact the Arizona State Bar, see if they have a place to advertise, I'm quite sure.
Ms. James? Is there someone who can extend this to Philadelphia? Just asking.
If you know someone?
Well, everybody else, they don't know the line. Okay, is that?
That's, you know, my, to get that tomorrow, because if we're not getting any responses, of course, we're gonna do something different. Right?
Item number fifteen. Discussion of possible approval to waive returning client privilege to discuss memo from county attorney regarding the Jacobs contract.
I move to waive the term client privilege to discuss the memo from county attorney regarding Jacobs' contract.
One second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Ms. Cornet?
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacchino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number sixteen. Ratification, oh, I'm sorry, we had the speaker, Ms. Pauline. Do you still want to speak?
Item sixteen.
You had votes here, ma'am, that's why.
I, item sixteen's fine.
Item number sixteen, ratification of actions taken on November twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. The purpose of this item is to ratify an earlier action by the mayor and council regarding entering into a five-year contact with Jacobs for operation services at the City of Bisbee wastewater treatment plant. Ms. Johns, or is it Ms. Giacchino?
Alright, so we waived the term client privilege on the memo that Brett sent us down, which I'm gonna pull up. But, anyway. Anyway, I did seek outside counsel on this, and I talked to Spencer Smith from D.C. McDonald, who's written several wastewater treatment plant contracts, including the one in Dallas that treats international sewage, and this contract doesn't stand for several reasons. Our legal advice was that, in this situation, the memo that Brett wrote, he said that Joni's, you know, what was it, where was it, I just forgot it. That Joni's claim that the contract was illegal was specious and nearly wishful. And that's not true, because right now, he said, he told us that Arizona law is very strict, that the contract is only good for one year, and that the majority of the council approved the motion for a one-year contract. The contract that was signed was signed for five years, and because the mayor cannot authorize a contract on his own, and he was the one who signed the contract, it's not good, it has to be approved by a majority of the council, and a majority of the council approved a twelve-month contract. This contract is only good for twelve months right now, as it stands. So, five-year contract is not valid because it was not approved by council. He also said that Arizona courts are pretty strict about stuff like this, and that Jacobs could sue us over this, but it's unlikely that they would because they know the discussion against them, against us, or that probably wouldn't happen. But like all good attorneys, he wasn't gonna predict what would happen in a lawsuit. We cannot, at this point, go back and amend the original motion to recognize that that was solicited for five years. What, to make this contract valid at this point, what this council has to do is we have to re-vote on this contract, and the motion has to be properly made for five years if we want to, in fact, ratify this contract for Jacobs. Let's see, because the way state procurement laws are written, it is based on the majority vote and that the motion governs. And the motion that was made verbally, and that is in the minutes, was for twelve months. And that is all that was authorized by the council back in November. So even though there was discussion, and the council did have that motion in front of them for five years, what came out of Doug Dunn's mouth, and that was in the minutes, was twelve months. That's all that is authorized at this point. Yeah, and so we got this memo, and I asked Mr. Hanson for, and he said that, you know, specious and nearly wishful claim that Joni made, I asked him for statute, I asked him for case law that would back him up, that she was wrong, and I got pulling court about me, which is a law book, and I got Robert Jewell's board. And when I talked to another attorney, he backed up what Joni said. And this attorney is very familiar with municipal law, contract law, and wastewater treatment plant contracts. So that's where we sit right now with this contract, as far as I'm concerned. It's good for this year, but we need to take care of this as soon as possible, and this council needs to decide what we're gonna do about it. And Joni, do you have something to add that I missed here?
The only thing that, that I think you mentioned is the fact that he did impress the fact that you cannot redo a motion, so, as I said before, something has to, you have to go in and fix it. And until we do so, we are only running on a new contract. And, I mean, they have the option, Jacobs, I suppose, to, if they chose to breach, because of the one contract, or they could write it out for a year and, you know, go from there. But my concern, again, was the worry, and the other, the other thing that was made was a comment about what I call legal cities and towns. My conversation was with her, was I stated that I thought it was illegal, and the thing that this void in her conversation to me was, well, she didn't think it was illegal. And I said at that time, I think it should at least go back to council to be amended. And her comment was, I think that's a good idea. And she also said that Alda and Brett would know what to do, and since everybody was in favor of the contract, it should not be an issue of fixing the situation. So that's what I decided to call my cousin, who does law in Tucson, and he had advised me to seek out another lawyer that was specialized. And I think that's the concern, that if we really want to clarify, we need to find somebody that is specialized. And all lawyers have their own specialty, but if we really want this fixed, we're gonna have to find a lawyer that understands contract law, meaning amounts of it, especially on a contract that does not have a state clause.
Exactly.
And that's kind of the situation here. But like I said, again, it's a one-year contract, they, you know, the ball's cutting in their court too, they could breach, and if they've been right, that's not what they thought, or they could fulfill the year contract, and they could go from there.
Yeah, Mr. Smith's other advice was that we take care of this as soon as possible, and because it is a real problem, and obviously, our legal counsel is walking out the door. So I would, I, I think we need to retain a lawyer, it doesn't have to be the one we spoke with, but he is very good, and he's done a few wastewater treatment plant contracts. Dwayne?
I did sign up to speak because I'm a staff, but can you speak on this issue?
Sharon.
Okay, thank you. Briefly, I'll try. Well, here I go, putting my foot in my mouth, I'm gonna be emotional. I understand, I get yelled at now, quite often, I'm in public over this thing. I have been accused of things, I, that plant, despite the rumors that some people are spreading, is now doing better than it has ever done. The amount of help that we've gotten now down there. We have a gentleman who's moved here, with three kids and his wife, to go to the schools here. That's three more kids going to our schools that are losing their population. They've hired a young woman who wants to start a career at that wastewater plant. You say something everyone knew, everyone knew this was a five-year contract. If another attorney says it needs to be ratified, that's on the agenda. I'm asking, and I'm begging for you guys to reratify this contract for five years. They have also agreed to negotiate an escape clause, once we have an attorney. We can't do that unless we have an attorney. They said they're willing to do that. And I know that somebody's gonna come up and say something else, but I am tired of everything that I've tried to do, and people in this town have tried to do, move us forward, it gets unvoted. It's horrible, as staff, I am tired of it. I've spent more time on some of this stuff than anything else, and everything that we're trying to do gets peeled back and peeled back. Okay, it's BS, I am sick of it. You guys do what you're willing to do, but I'm not gonna be a part of bringing the city down anymore, I'm tired of it.
And I understand the necessity for them, but it stands that this contract is not.
You can't ratify it.
You can't ratify it, Dwayne?
Whatever, I will, let me, let me, I just want to, I want to make sure that we all are on the same page. And I want the audience to stop speaking. We have a legal opinion on one side, we have another legal opinion. The legal opinion is that the contracts don't do it. Brett's legal opinion, our city attorney, this that it uses, those aren't legal opinions, those are not facts. Okay? So all I'm, all I'm saying is, I am certainly not against, if we need to go to the expense of hiring an attorney, that's fine, I, but all I'm trying to say is that it's not a done deal, this is, this is a legal opinion, and I accept the fact that it's a legal opinion. That's why every action that we have in court, there's two lawyers, two sides to it, we need legal opinions.
Um, it's not, I, something, it's not that it's a matter of illegal, you know, I had said that at the beginning.
Yes.
It's a legal one-year contract, is what he said, that's what he said. And so it's not that it's void, it's not that it's, that we're working under an illegal contract. What was okayed by the council was a one-year contract. And his reasoning to take care of it now is the longer you wait, the more problems the city will have if something happens. And that's why it's imperative, like she said, that we seek, you know, and I, I agree, someone that specializes in it, to make sure, you know, to clean it up and make sure it's what it's supposed to.
No disagreement, nor am I arguing.
No, no, I just wanted to clarify that.
And all, but all, but all I'm saying is that that also is a legal opinion.
Right.
But we might as well have Ms. Pauline. You have three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you, dear. Thank you, Mayor Council. And thank you, Ms. Hanson, for bringing up the point earlier that it's important that the council seriously consider what they say because it affects what happens to Bisbee. And I wanted to also acknowledge your no vote on the contract that was voted on on November twentieth. What I've given to you is an appeal on the city manager's decision regarding this contract. And attached to that appeal is the memorandum of points and authorities that cite the Arizona statute that designates four separate areas in this contract that are not in compliance with the state law regarding multi-year contracts. I won't go into detail right now, because there's a limited time, but one of the areas that the contract is defective is the cancellation clause in a multi-year contract of over five hundred thousand dollars. So that in itself is in opposition to Arizona Rebound Statute thirty-four dash six oh seven C. There are three other violations of this contract that have to do with proving financial feasibility for the city to pay and the procurement process that was used. In the fact that engineering services were retained by this company, and on the selection committee, there was. on this election committee, there was not an engineer. That's a violation of 34-603 of the Arizona Revise Statute. So not only is the contract not valid according to the Arizona statute, it's not valid because of the procurement process. This is not a valid contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pauling. Do we have a motion?
I move we hire outside counsel to help us with this.
A second. I, that's not a valid motion. I'm sorry. It's not, that hiring an attorney is not on the agenda. I'm sorry, I mean, it's not on the agenda. The agenda item is to ratify. We can add that to the one next lead. Ms. Cornado, add item number three on our special session, please. Thank you, but we need, that will be a violation. Ms. Pauling.
That is the only thing that I was going to say, that it's, it's agendized as reratifying or ratifying revoked. So that wouldn't be agendized, so we'll be able to-
That's fair.
We can make suggestions for it.
The only motion that can be made is to ratify. So we can move along, I will make a motion to ratify the actions taken on November 20 of 2018, which is actions of the mayor and council regarding entering into a five-year contract with Jacobs for operational services of the city of Bisbee's wastewater treatment plant. That is my motion. Is there a second?
That was your, that motion was for a five-year contract?
Yes.
All set.
So if we're going now, it's still one year, we're still-
Mr. Lindstrom?
Mr. Smith.
Did you want an answer?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm about to give you one. The answer is, it is a legal opinion that this is a one-year contract, but not a five-year contract. That is not set in stone. That may in fact be true. It may not be true. I cannot tell you which way.
Oh, a no vote is not ratified. Which says what?
It stands on the way it is. I'm sorry, I-
The legal side disagrees.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Keep this for your now. So we have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornado, would you call?
Councilmember Lindstrom?
May.
Councilmember Giacominio?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passed, I think, 43. Item number 17, discussion of possible approval of a motion going to executive session to discuss the job performance of the city manager on the scale. For ARS 38-431.03A1, discussion or consideration of appointment, assignment, appointment, promotion, demotion, dismissal, salaries, discipline of the, discipline or resignation of a public officer, appointee, or employee of any public body. Do we have a motion? I'll move that we go into executive session. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side?
Aye.
We stand in executive session.
Now, good.
Thank you, ma'am. May I have a motion?
I move to come out of executive session.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Those in favor by coming out of executive session, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, which appear unanimously. Item number 18, discussion of possible approval of a lease agreement for coffee machines with Xerox Corporation for city office. Ms. Cornado? Will you get your exercise tonight?
Yeah, any second. The decision again, to be for you tonight is a lease agreement with Xerox Corporation for our coffee machine services. They, it'll be two machines, one is full, full building, excuse me. One 7352 is for the larger machine that will be going at the main building. And 9860 per month will be going at the smaller building. We've contracted with Xerox in the past. It is state contract, so we are hoping to get this approved so we can have a coffee machine.
And a state lease agreement.
Yes, it's very standard.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
And I brought it up during budget time, too. Why are we leasing? Why can't we just go out? I mean, you guys probably use it more so maybe a lease would be better to you, but like for the fire department and stuff like that and whatever, side departments to use, why don't we just buy?
The reason a lease is better is we get all maintenance, we get all of our toners, we get everything included. And then if something goes wrong in one of the machines that we buy, we're kind of out a machine. I mean, yes, they have warranties for so long, but this kind of covers us throughout the duration of it. And once our lease is up, we get a new machine. We're not stuck with the old antiquated machine after so many years. You know, we can always upgrade after a while. It does, like I said, include all the maintenance, all, all the toner, everything. Or we would have to budget for that separately. Well done.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve lease agreement for-
I'm sorry, I'm-
I'll stay there, go ahead.
Well, oh, okay. It's all right. I move to approve lease agreement for coffee machines reserved corporation for city office.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornado, this is a lease, so you can have to go.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominio?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passed, which is unanimous. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Smith, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I have a few items to share this evening. Public Works, the wastewater crew is about 50% finished with the laundry aisle fire suppression extension for that fire hydrant. And they're working to try and conclude that in the next two weeks.
A little more into the mic.
I'm sorry. Final parts of engineering are being completed for the Tombstone Canyon drainage repairs. Street crews will be pouring concrete. They actually poured it this last weekend for the Hereford Road Drainage. I think that was seven concrete trucks full. And we didn't lose a single man in the project. We're exploring a new buyer for recyclables. Our public works director will start mid-March. We've hired someone who has Arizona experience as a public works director and also has a civil engineering degree. We'll be bringing Grassley Park Lighting Contract forward for action, and we'll be looking to get that built. The Tim Town Phase Two Rebid is being advertised, that's moving forward. In the Fire Department, I think this is the first time in a long time we've had a full complement of employees in the Fire Department. They're all going through orientations and training. You saw this evening that there's been some healthy movement within our ranks. They're putting together the mobile air unit and the system that we got on the Firehouse Subs Grant, so we can have full air in case of an emergency. We've also been working with Douglas on backup recharge because our compressor is down. The refresher class for Wildland is going to be happening next month. Everybody's going to be getting the update on that. We did get one of the bay doors fixed at the Fire Department. They've had some trouble off and on for the last six months. And Public Works is going to be repairing the roof leak at Station 82. As you saw tonight, we've been working on classification and description for tourism and marketing. We look forward to getting direction from council and the public on how to craft that accurately and pursue the best person possible. The, we went to the Cochise Combined Trust Board meeting. They have indicated that we would be welcome, should we choose to join. That's a discussion that we will have around the budget season. We've already been gathering feedback from the employee council and employees here. Let's see, our OSHA reporting's up to date. Let's see, 12 new policies are going through the Civil Service Commission. And then they'll be coming to council as soon as we can get them there. They range across paid time, PTO cash out, and some other provisions that council asks us to look at. We started working on the classification study, and we're going to be asking for some reviews from an outside consultant, but we'll largely be carrying the water ourselves on that. We're trying to save some, some of our, our cash. Two grounds, keeper positions were hired there starting in February. The city hall offices have moved. We've been having some problems porting our numbers from Singular over to our new service. It hasn't been us, it's been them. I recently attended the conference, the Association of City County Managers get together twice a year, and I recently attended a conference with them. And I wanted to share some information with council. Every time we get together as a group of managers, we have presentations on ethics. This last time, the ethics issues were focused on when managers concede to council requests that lead to ethical issues. And that's something that we got a lot of focus on. Give policies, social media policies, and formal ethics reporting processes were something we looked at. And I think those are germane to Bisbee. We don't have those. And then establishing ethics within the personnel policy, the culture, and the administrative processes in the organization. We haven't tackled that yet. It will be something that we look to tackle with the new budget year. I made some contacts in recycling while I was there. There was a fascinating presentation from Phoenix about the changing market of recyclable materials and what we're going to have to do if we want to make that work. And ultimately, that's, we have to clean up our collections to the point that there's no contamination at all. And that means that we're going to have to deploy some different approaches to collections and then transportation. I did get Phoenix's agreement that they would help us once we had a public works director in place to take a look at how we've deployed containers and routing and how we're looking at recycling to optimize not just the recycling part, but also the solid waste part as well, garbage. We, we need to finish conversion to roll out in some areas and think about some other ideas. Part of the presentation was about the, the growing markets and outlets that may be here stateside that would cut down on some of the transportation costs. And then how do you look at, from soup to nuts, your recycling process to determine, is it breaking even or not? What, what are you actually getting out of it and how you account for all those things? Like I said, we'll be getting some help from folks in Phoenix who have been doing this on a scale much larger than us. There was also another presentation I thought was interesting. The University of Arizona has a national institute for civil discourse. And if you haven't seen that before, I would recommend taking a look at what they have online. They've been around for six to eight years, and they're now starting to provide services to state legislatures across the US because of incivility at the political level where decisions are being made by elected officials. And some interesting information was shared by the lady who put that institute together. Her approach and where she's coming from is democracy is built to be an argument. And what we've seen at the presidential levels over the last several presidents is incivility within those races has become almost unbearable for people to watch. And people aren't talking to each other, they're not talking about alternatives, they're not really having discourse with the other side. It's just a battle. And what, what we got out of it was democracy is supposed to be a conversation, and the quality of the conversation matters when it comes to the decisions that are being made by the elected officials for their communities. And she shared some interesting numbers. They've gone through, the University of Arizona's gone through several surveys of the American populace. They've surveyed all four living generations, and her information shows that 59% of America, all four living generations right now believe, 59% right now believe that this is the lowest point in our nation's history today. The American Medical Association, doctors are now prescribing to patients that they disconnect from the news and social media because they're leading causes of stress. When she surveyed all four living generations, asking them what their number one causes of stress were, the number one cause of stress in the survey was the future of our nation. The number four cause of stress was the political climate. Those, I mean, you, you think about it, you've got, what do you make? What are your kids doing? Your house, your job, education? The top, two of the top five were dealing with politics and decision-making. 75% in this survey felt that incivility was at a crisis, and 79% said that it's leading to less political engagement, not more. That the more that people are unable to talk when they're making decisions in the political sphere, the less the populace wants to participate. And the final number, 83% of those that were surveyed thought that incivility leads to intolerance of free speech. And so the divide gets bigger. I thought it was fascinating. These folks have a website, and I can send the link. There's a lot of different tools that you can deploy that would give you some creative approaches to maybe trying to bridge the divides that exist. But she's currently working with our state legislature and many more across the US to try and make a difference there. There was a session on PSPRS that I've got to start some research for. The future liabilities in PSPRS have not been dealt with. The tier one and tier two improvements have, have partially been deployed, but the tier three improvements have not. And PSPRS is estimating that there's going to be a seven and a half percent rate of return or growth on the investments, and they have never made that. I mean, not in the last 15 years have they made seven and a half percent. So we know already that the performance of the investment isn't there, and we're going to have to cough up more money. There are some things, the folks from Glendale were there, and they shared a lot of information. They've been doing some actuarial study. And there were some things that they shared about their experience, particularly one of the examples was Wildland firefighting. And they showed how when firefighters go off and they help- But that firefighter at the end of that year, if they've been deployed four or five times, may make 25, maybe 30% more that year than they would have made normally under their salary position within the department. And I think that's a great thing. I mean, anytime people can make more money, I think that's awesome, especially when it doesn't come out of the city's coffers. But those numbers are the numbers that PSPRS uses to compute their retirement. And so if they had the opportunity, and, you know, so you go to California, and you get paid all this money to fight the fire, and you're successful, and you save all these lives, and you make all this money, and California pays for that one-time visit, but the city of Bisbee pays for the retirement liability based on that amount. And so I'm not saying that you can't do that, but you need to look ahead and figure out what that liability's going to be, and figure out where you're going to come up with the money for it. The same thing can happen with OT, you know, OT use and paid time off, but really, there's more to it with the external firefighting. So the bottom line is, I need to take a look at this and see what the exposure might be. Right now, we're not budgeting for paid time off, it's an unfunded liability in the budget, it's a significant unfunded liability, and when you compare, when you compound that with where PSPRS is going, even though we figured out how to pay the 1.2 million, that's not going to be the bottom of it. And I've got that 1.2 million covered in our budget, and we're still in the black, but that's not going to do it all. We have to put back more. I, we need to figure out where that's going to, so we need to take a look at that. The AGMA board, I sit on the board for the City Managers Association, and one of the things we focused on was creating more internships and capstone projects as opportunities for ASU and U of A students. And that's to reach out to folks that haven't finished their degrees yet, to give them some real-world experience, but, you know, we get work out of them, and it's real-world research managed by the academics there. So we talked about that, we talked about increasing the introduction of young professionals into management and directorship levels within the administration. If there's one thing that I've seen across Arizona and across the US is a vacuum in leadership when it comes to local government administration. And we have a lot of older folks who are retiring and graying out, and we don't have a lot of young people coming in, and this relationship with U of A and ASU is important to that. We, as an association, create a Next Gen Conference once a year to invite these young people in, and for $35 for the day, they come in, they get fed, and they're able to get training and one-on-one mentoring from people within AGMA to help them figure out how to get into a management role. So I think it's important that we continue to pursue that here in Arizona. Other states are going at it gangbusters, and we're a little bit behind. There's also a small cities forum that I'm creating here with Benson, and Wachuka City, and Wilcox, and, you know, Douglas would be in there, too, but we're starting to get together to share some of the solutions that we have found to our problems, because sometimes we have common problems, but we've come up with a solution, and you don't know that your next-door neighbor may have come up with something better. And one of the first things we're doing is sharing information about the combined trust between the county and Cochise College. We've all been going independently to get healthcare and risk management coverage, and it may turn out that if the group of us are in the trust, the trust becomes strong enough that we actually have a competitive advantage in putting that together. I'm also talking with the small cities about housing. I think affordable housing and housing rehabilitation's important in our area, particularly in Bisbee, and we have resources here that used to do it, and they stopped when the recession hit. And I think that working with the COG and the county and the other resources that are here, and working with Habitat for Humanity that's headed our way, we stand a chance of having some demonstration projects, and then diverting federal dollars back into our area to rehabilitate our housing stock and create some affordable housing. That's about it for my report, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
I move to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Do you need a second?
Do we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of adjournment, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Please stand with your hand.